Good evening and welcome to the City of Helena's City Commission Regular Meeting, January 11, 2021, 6:00 PM. Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena's City Commission Meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in this unprecedented time. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. Welcome your public commentary during the meeting. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage and your participation. This meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk, would you take the role, please?
City Attorney Joden.
Here.
Commissioner Harlow Schalt, excuse me.
Here.
Commissioner Halliday.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Lachlan.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here. Would you rise for the pledge of allegiance? Madam Clerk? I pledge allegiance to the flag. Minutes, regular commission minutes, July 27, 2020, were received. Do we have any corrections, additions to make? If not, it will stand as submitted. Consent agenda claims. Madam Manager?
Mayor Commission, I request you adopt a motion, entertain a motion to adopt the claims from the end of December and into January in the amounts of $642,775, excuse me, $742,757.37, $666,041.9 cents, and $986,525.62 cents.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would move consent agenda item A, claims, B, authorization for staff to void stale dated unclaimed checks, C, a one-year lease with Rocky Mountain Development Council for the neighborhood center, and D, acceptance of a grant from the Montana Department of Natural Resources and Conservation to treat approximately 25 forested acres located within Mount Ascension Natural Park to minimize impacts from bark beetles and to improve overall resilience to forest insects and diseases.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, Madam Clerk?
Mayor, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I just want to make sure that, I know that you say claims at the beginning, but if the city manager had any other additional information on the items that we have on claims, and I know we usually ask for public comment, but in advance of that, I wasn't sure, Rachel, if you had any other info on items B, C, and D.
C, and D. You're on mute.
Apologies, yes, they're online. They are, yes. Thank you, Mayor and Commission, yes. The unclaimed property voided checks are specific to the, a total amount of $395.29. They are checks that have gone stale, which means that they have, we could not find the payees or they did not respond to our letters requesting they pay those. They requesting they request a new check be issued, as well the one-year lease is the annual lease that comes before the commission for the Rocky Mountain Development Council within the neighborhood facility, and it was a, that concept itself within the neighborhood facility was part of an urban renewal plan. The Development Council itself has received an annual renewal. This is a continuation of an annual renewal process. At the end of this year, we will bring back to the commission an opportunity to lease the property to the organization for longer since the organization and its change is not anticipated, but at this time it is just for the one-year lease. The next is the consideration of the grant from the Natural Resources Conservation Department at the State of Montana. It's for 25 forested acres located within Mount Ascension. The total amount is 11, excuse me, $35,755.88 with a required match from the City of Helena, which is within the Department of Open Space Maintenance Budget Department's open space maintenance budget, and this adoption will ensure incorporation into the city's budget.
Thank you, Madam Manager. We'll open up for comments from the commission. Public comments? Madam Clerk, do you have any raised hands?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no raised hands and I've received no public comment in a written form either.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion. Oh, well, it was already gone, huh? Was it seconded?
Yes, I seconded it.
Yes.
Madam Manager, would you take the role?
Okay, Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Lachlan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Communications proposals from the Commissioners? Anything new from the Commissioners? Okay, we'll move along. City Attorneys' Report?
Mayor Commissioners, I actually do have something to report on this evening, three items specifically. I'll start with the first two are Human Rights Bureau complaints. We've recently got two no finding, no reasonable cause findings from the HRB. The first one dealt with a local building contractor that brought a claim against the Building Division alleging discrimination on the basis of a disability and conducting an inspection that the contractor was working on. The HRB found that there was no cause as the claimant had not put the city on notice of the need for an accommodation, and further, the complaint didn't fully participate and indicated a desire to withdraw, although did not file the necessary paperwork. I don't expect, nor does our council expect, that the contractor will be filing an objection to the Human Rights Commission or a complaint directly with the District Court. And then on that one, Murray Warhank was able to help us out as MMIA provided counsel, thanks. So thanks to Murray for doing a tremendous job and tracking that out and defending the city. The second one was a Human Rights Bureau complaint brought by a former employee that alleged discrimination on the basis of age, gender, and national origin. The HRB in that case as well found that there was no reasonable cause for that complaint and issued a notice of dismissal same timeframe. The complainant has 14 days to file an objection of the dismissal with the Human Rights Commission and 90 days to file a complaint of discrimination in District Court. We're monitoring those deadlines. And then again, Jordan, I think I'm sure where Jordan Crosby was representing the city on that particular claim. So thanks to her for helping us track that out. And then you can, I'll stop there. Let me know if you have any questions to the extent I can answer them and maintain the confidentiality of the complainants. I will let me know if you have a need for a report or a copy of either report, and I can get those to you.
Comments from the commission? Please continue, Mr. Jordan.
Okay, the final thing I have to report on is negotiation that we are engaging the Environmental Protection Agency on over alleged violations of our industrial pre-treatment framework and program. The EPA has alleged that the city hasn't complied with the requisite 2017 audit, and so my office, along with the manager's office, has engaged with Browning, Kalazak, Berry, and Hoven to help us respond. We're currently reviewing a draft administrative order of consent and we'll be getting back to the EPA on that. So right now, we're still in the settlement negotiation phase as to those alleged deficiencies in the program and will be responding and letting the commission know as we move closer to what the potential impacts the EPA may be looking at with regard to these allegations. I can answer any questions on that.
Comments or questions from the commission?
Yeah, from Mr. Joden, so when you say the phrase "industrial pre-treatment," what does that mean?
Yeah, no, thank you. That's a, that's a great question. So the city, obviously, Mayor, Commissioner Halliday, the city runs its wastewater treatment plant, and the Clean Water Act requires that operators of those types of treatment plants screen for industrial users that may cause damage to the plant and/or cause the discharge of the plant to violate the Clean Water Act. In Helena, there are two, perhaps three, industrial users. One is a plating business, one is MRL, BNSF, and one is potentially the VA and the fort. We are required under the Clean Water Act and our permit to regulate those entities to ensure that they do not discharge into our treatment plant certain chemicals that could damage the plant or cause the discharge permit to be violated.
Are you done, Commissioner?
I am, thank you.
You bet. Do we have any other comments from the commission? Thank you, Mr. Jordan.
Thank you.
Are you completed?
I am, thank you.
Thank you. City Managers' Report?
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. First, I wanted to make sure and share to you that the report from your one-on-one conversations with our facilitator to complete your strategic plan and set norms, expectations, guiding principles, and then overall strategic outcomes for the community as well as within the commission will be coming out. I will be sending along with that report via email to you a drafted agenda for the January 23th retreat. Again, that's on a Saturday, and it will be a public meeting, so the agenda itself will make sure to offer opportunity for public input. The outcome of that public session will be the drafting of strategic outcomes, which will be then offered out to the community for input and assurance that where the commission is directing the team to go within its vision of the community is the right direction. I also wanted to make sure to share to you one of the recent successes of our team and some exceptional work of our team members. Darren Ferguson, our lead water treatment operator, Janice Sanderson, new water treatment operator, Trent Schuer, utility maintenance superintendent, and James Newland, acting water supervisor. On Christmas Day at around 8:00 AM, the transmission line from the 10-mile treatment plant broke, and we lost approximately 2 million gallons of water in around 30 minutes. With a few fields, while a few fields were flooded, there was no property damage. What Helena has that cities in, that many cities in Montana do not have is a second water plant. The Missouri River Plant, which is used in the summertime to address high demand, is something that we have. On Christmas Day, that plant was shut down for the winter as we normally do. Darren spent four hours and brought the plant back online and switched the city's water over to that plant. He worked all the way, all day, making sure supply to the town happened. He did not leave the plant until the reservoirs were full, and he and Janice worked throughout the day, including having Christmas dinner at the plant to ensure we all had water on Christmas Day. Trent and James worked on the line in the field strategizing alternatives if the Missouri River couldn't, plant could not be switched over. They found all of the parts necessary to complete a repair except one, which Trent was making plans to drive to another state to pick up if the Missouri River Plant could not come back online. In my time bringing back online communities who have suffered disasters, when all utilities are off, water service is the most important, not only for drinking water, but for fire suppression. This team not only ensured we had water on Christmas, but that we had fire hydrants that could respond to a fire. There was also no pressure loss within our system. The bigger victory to the story is the fourth thought for resilient water supply that this community has had. I'm not aware of anywhere else in Montana that this could have happened in where you'd have a second water plant come online. So good government sometimes is quiet, good staff are ready, and good communities build resilient systems. Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing else to share tonight except for this wonderful.
Thank you, Madam Manager. I will sincere thanks and appreciation to the team also. We thank you. Communications from Helena Citizens Council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. This is Dylan Klatmeyer, the chairman of the Helena Citizens Council. Our first HCC meeting of the year is coming up on January 27th. We'll have election of officers, and so I'll be sure and report to the city commission and city manager who the officers are going forward into 2021. Also at that meeting, we'll be establishing our annual budget committee for the HCC to be involved in the city budgeting process. We anticipate that our current treasurer, Nancy Perry, will be leading that up again along with Sumner Sharp, our vice chair. Beyond that, our vice chair, Sumner, also wanted me to relay that he is leading the HCC's community outreach group, and so they've been doing a good job utilizing the neighborhood districts to reach out to the citizens of Helena, get their email addresses, get their contact information, and Sumner's working on building a list that we can use to engage the residents of Helena. And we plan on utilizing that during the budgeting process to get feedback from the various neighborhood districts on what they want to see in a city budget. So I think that's all I have at this time unless there's any questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Klatmeyer. Do we have any questions from the commission? Thank you, sir. Public hearings. Consider final passage of Ordinance Number 3286, amending Chapter 1 of Title V of the Helena City Code by repeating Part 3, possessions of firearms prohibited, exceptions in its entirety in adopting 5-1-3 firearms and other weapons discharged in its place. Attorney Jordan?
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. As you know, this item, this ordinance was presented for initial discussion at the December 2nd, 2020 Administrative Meeting. First passage was held on December 7th, 2020, and a public hearing was set for December 21st, 2020. After holding that public hearing, the commission tabled the ordinance to tonight for which we have a legal public advertised hearing. As a summary, and I apologize for not laying this out in more thorough detail in December, currently 5-1-3 City Code prohibits, one, the carrying of a loaded firearm at a public assembly or in a city park, school, or publicly owned building unless the person to do so is doing so for purposes of a gun show, hunter, or gun safety courses. Second, 513 requires concealed carry permit holders in possession of a concealed weapon permit to immediately advise law enforcement when they have been stopped by law enforcement and the type of weapon and show their permit. And then third, concealed carry permit holders can carry weapons, open or, open or concealed, loaded or unloaded wherever they desire unless the activity is otherwise prohibited by Montana code, and I'll come back to that at the end because there is a bill, HB 102. Currently, the legislature is considering that we'll change that analysis if passed. This ordinance was drafted in response to Legislative Referendum 130, which was approved in November 2020. As of January 1st, the effective date of that referendum, local government regulation of firearms is far more limited as a result of its passage. First regulation or first aspect that is altered with respect to local government is LR 130 removes the local government's right to regulate the carrying of concealed weapons by people who possess a valid concealed carry permit. Local governments still retain the right to forbid the carrying of concealed firearms by people who do not have a permit, and I think it's important to note that that appears and that will still be the case if HB 102 is passed and signed by the governor. Local governments will still be able to regulate concealed firearm carry by folks who do not have a permit. The second change that LR 130 brings about is that local governments can only regulate open carry to publicly owned and occupied buildings under the local government's jurisdiction. That's important because the current language in City Code only pertains to publicly owned buildings, which is not consistent with LR 130. As I noted above, currently 5-1-3B accepts concealed weapons permit holders from any of the regulations in 513, including open carry of loaded or unloaded pistols or revolvers. So one thing that this ordinance would do is remove that exception. And so as of January 1st, and would continue to be legal if 5-1-3 remains in its current form, is the open carry of firearms, loaded or unloaded, in publicly owned buildings because 513 does not include the quote "and occupied" qualifier to publicly owned buildings. Two, it would allow open carry of a pistol or revolver, loaded or unloaded, in a public building by those who have concealed weapons permits. And as I mentioned, we drafted this ordinance relying on 45-8-328, which regulates the carrying of concealed weapons in portions of the building used for government offices. HB 102 would change that analysis. So if passed tonight, we will continue tracking HB 102, and if it passes, I would recommend that we, the commission, consider an amendment to the firearm regulations of City Code to incorporate that regulation because at the end of the day, even if HB 102 passes, LR 130 still clearly authorizes local governments the authority to regulate unpermitted concealed weapons permit carry in government buildings. I have attached a chart in the packet that shows what the current regulations are, how those conflict with LR 130, and how the proposed ordinance resolves that conflict, and then what will happen if it's not adopted. I did, I was able to track down, at least with respect to Missoula, Great Falls, Bozeman, and Billings, how their ordinances compare, firearm ordinances compare, and what they are doing. Billings only appears to regulate the carrying of firearms at city council meetings, so I didn't think their ordinance necessarily was consistent with what Helena's is. Missoula, Great Falls, and Bozeman is generally similar, however, none of those cities have the blanket exception for concealed weapons permit holders. Nevertheless, Missoula, the council has postponed consideration of any potential amendments until next year, now that next year being 2021. Currently, the proposal has been referred to a city council committee for initial discussion in January 2021, and as of late last week, I hadn't gotten a date as to when that might be in January. Great Falls, no action is being recommended at this time, and Bozeman, they're planning on presenting an amendment to the commission sometime later in 2021. In the meantime, they are telling officers not to enforce conflicting parts of their local ordinance. The proposal here tonight is to amend 5-1-3 of City Code to effectively implement the city's authority under LR 130, a clearer and more easily understood. The advantage is revising 5-1-3 would effectively implement that city, the city's authority, and clearly prohibit the open carry of loaded or unloaded firearms in publicly owned and occupied buildings, and probably most important, eliminate the concealed weapons permit exception that currently exists. If the ordinance is not passed and existing city code is not amended, folks will still be allowed to open carry firearms in publicly owned buildings, including restricted local government offices, and two, the open carry of a pistol or revolver in publicly owned buildings will, who have a concealed weapon permit will be able to carry those openly. With that, I would recommend a motion to approve final passage of Ordinance 3286, and answer any questions the commission has.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Comments from the commission?
Mayor, I guess I have one question.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
So first, I'll say, I apologize that I missed the meetings when this was discussed, and just thank you to the commission for your flexibility as I was dealing with some family and friend deaths last month, but I, so I apologize if this has been clearly articulated in a past meeting, but I'm looking Thomas at the table that you provided, which is really helpful, which is on page 89 of our packet. And I, just on that last, so the last row related to concealed carry permit holders, it looks like the activities that are forbidden under the current law or the current ordinance that they are, they can carry weapons wherever they desire, concealed carry. And so your recommendation is to to limit that, prohibit open carry in publicly owned and occupied buildings. That's allowed under LR 130. Is there a reason why, can you give some background as to why that wasn't included in our ordinance prior to this?
I'm not sure I'm tracking the question as to what was not, Mayor, Commissioner, or Lachlan, what was not included in our ordinance prior to LR 130?
So right now, you can conceal carry any, anywhere, so that just has never been, that was not included in our current ordinance?
Mayor, Commissioner Lachlan? Correct. We relied on 45-8, I have to look at my notes because all of these get mixed up in my mind. 45-8-328, which says that you can't, folks can't carry concealed concealed weapons even with a permit in, you know, restricted government offices. So if you say the public's not allowed, they can't come in with a concealed permit, permitted or unpermitted. Our code did allow, and so that overlapped with current city code, which allowed concealed carry permit holders to carry wherever they wanted. It accepted them from any regulation in City Code subject to state law that said they couldn't carry in certain government offices.
Okay, so if I'm understanding this right, I mean, we're, you're recommending that we adhere to LR 130. That part is also adhering to LR 130, but I'm just trying to understand, like, it sounds like the potential disadvantage of, and it sounds like the disadvantages of not passing it would be, we would, we would continue to allow concealed carry in publicly owned and occupied buildings?
Mayor, Commissioner Lachlan, that's correct. I would also add that because the current code allows permit holders, concealed weapon permit holders from any of our regulations, there's an argument that they would be allowed to open carry because our, even if we were to instruct the police, law enforcement, you know, cite them, but make sure you include the language from LR 130 that includes "and occupied." Our code doesn't incorporate that. So that could be a charging issue if we get that far. But even if we were to have that instruction, a permit holder would be able to carry open because they're allowed to now under LR 130, but because city code exempts them from any regulation whatsoever. Somebody with a concealed weapon permit would be able to open carry a firearm because we have that blanket exception. And that's really the concern with that is allowing them, allowing the concealed weapon permit holder to be exempt from city code, they would be allowed to open carry in city owned and occupied buildings. And this draft would eliminate that exception.
So then one more quick follow up mayor. So I guess my, I guess I'm just wondering if we can separate, separate out these two issues. So there's sort of adhering to LR 130, which in my mind is related to sort of the first two rows and then the second one to, to basically clarify where, where the city is at with concealed carry and permitting concealed. Yeah. Prohibiting those that have concealed carry permits from open carrying in publicly owned and occupied buildings. Like, could we, could we change the ordinance to address that specific issue, but maybe wait on the LR 130 components just to see how the rest of, I mean, given that we're in a legislative session, there are ongoing conversations about some of these. Some of these issues, I wonder if, if it's prudent to wait to see how all of that shakes out. But I'm, I'm recognizing now and understanding that, that the third row is potentially something that might, we might want to address now. But I don't know if you have thoughts on that.
Can always amend as Mr. Jordan stated, even if to pass it in the legislature, we can amend it later on. Any other comments from the commission? Oh, do you, were you asking a question Commissioner Olafen? To Mr. Jordan?
Well, I don't know. I mean, I, I don't know, Thomas, if you have thoughts on that, like in my head, it seems like there are two separate issues here at play. But maybe I'm not, not understanding it.
Yeah, Mayor Collins, Commissioner Olafen, I, I, I think that's a fair assessment. There are two separate issues. I will say that I'm, I'm looking at the current structure of the ordinance now versus our draft and I'm, I'm thinking mostly out loud, but expressing a concern that you know, the present ordinance is a, a complete repeal or the present draft ordinance is a repeal. So the language showing, you know, the exception for exception that where a concealed weapons permit has been granted to bear concealed or otherwise a pistol or revolver during the time of such permission. That language has been just taken out because it's a complete repeal. And if I'm understanding what you might be thinking is just a simple strikeout of that sentence in our current city code that, that we're not I guess notifying the public of that specific change in code. I mean, it would look substantially different than what the commission has before and what the public has before it right now in terms of just a simple ordinance amendment.
Well, maybe a question then, what was the, what was the reason for tabling it in December and to this specific date?
So my take on why I wanted to table this was I think that we at least need to know, one, what the changes are going to be. I think we're mending this thing again, probably. At the end of this session, if no one's challenged it in court by that time. I have a take, at least from what I understand, that there are a city or two that may remain, leave theirs on the book and provoke a challenge. Or actually intend to enforce theirs, whereas some say they're not going to and intend to, to challenge this. If I remember right, there's no severability clause in LR 130. So there's an argument out there that if one piece of it is gunky, the whole thing is going down, which would leave us then with our original amendment in place. And so, you know, for me it was, why not wait and see what happens at the end of the session, or if we actually provoke a court challenge and what the results of that are. Before we go messing with the statutory scheme that if we repeal, then what we're doing in six months is reenacting the entire statutory scheme again. And there's, you know, myriad precedent in Montana of leaving statutes on the books to see what happens in court challenges historically.
Any other comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I would just, I just have a couple of comments. First to Mr. Jordan, this chart was very helpful. I got a little bit confused after the last discussion and now having that conversation with you and then also this chart really helped me. For me, I, I know personally, I would like to make sure that we just have whatever safeguards we can in place. And I know that Mr. Jordan is recommending that we take these steps tonight so that we can have at least some safeguards in place. And then we can come back to this at the end of the session. Or, or at the end of, you know, whatever litigation might happen. But I think this whole discussion has just shown exactly why LR 130 was just poorly written and a terrible thing to go before the voters and, you know, just really antithetical to local control. But I do appreciate Mr. Jones' work to try and clarify these, you know, very confusing issues for us.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any others? Do we have any public comments? And I'm clerk, do we have any raised hands?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I have no hands raised in the meeting and I've received no written public comment at this time.
Nothing else from the public, nothing from the commission, then I'll entertain a motion. Mayor. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Would move to approve final passage of ordinance number thirty two eighty six, amending chapter one of title five of the Helena city code by repealing part three. Possessions of fire, possession of firearms prohibited exceptions in its entirety and adopting five dash one dash three firearms and other weapons discharge in its place.
Let's see in a second.
Second.
Is the moved and seconded, Madam Clerk?
Yeah, Mayor, can we actually have a little bit of?
Okay.
So I, I'm, I'm a little conflicted on this because I, like I said, I mean, I recognize the, the need to potentially address the, the permit holders and, and open carry. It seems like that, that's just like a language issue with our, with our ordinance that legitimately needs to be addressed. At the same time, I'm, I'm, I'm inclined not to support this today. I, I agree that LR 130 was was very problematic from a local control standpoint. And I think that, you know, like, like other municipalities that are really holding right now before taking action to you know, to modify their, their ordinances makes, makes some sense in my mind. I, I wish that these two things potentially could come before us separately. But I recognize that, you know, it's a little bit, it's, it's definitely convoluted. And I also appreciate this information. I, I'm not sure that all this information was in front of us in December. And so it is, it is helpful. But perhaps I, I, I wish I, we would have been able to give some potential direction to modify the ordinance to address that, that third issue. So I'm, I'm a little concerned about moving forward that with this today, but you know, recognize that there's some aspects of it that perhaps need, need to be addressed today.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do we have any others?
Mr. Mayor, I guess I would just ask if Mr. Jordan has any thoughts as to Commissioner Olafen's comments. Because I, I mean, my, my biggest concern is I want to make sure that we have at least some safeguards that we are able to have in place. And from the information that's been provided, if we don't pass this tonight, then we won't have, you know, those safeguards in place, given LR 130 is active. Now, and I, I'm just curious if Mr. Jordan has any response or, or comments?
No, Mayor.
Any other comments, discussion from the commission? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday.
No.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Olafen.
Nay.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries three to two.
Thank you. Consider a resolution establishing fees to be charged for the Bill Roberts Municipal Golf Course for 2021 season. Director Benozzo.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Tonight we have a resolution for updating our golf course fees. We update these every year. We have added resident discount fees this year. These were adopted broadly for our parks and recreation programs. And now we've included resident discounts. We have a tower club resident discount proposed and two other resident discount programs proposed, a family pass with pool access and a half season pass with resident discounts. All of the rates across the board are in a position to remain constant for 2021. We did see some increase in rounds this summer and that paired with the long-term impacts of COVID. We've determined that there's not a need nor is there market tolerance for across the board rate increases. We do propose some minimal increases to season passes. In the future, all fees will be updated annually on a percentage, on a percentage basis in lines with, in line with basic cost of living increases. And this yearly increase will be much more palatable to the vast majority of our customers. We recommend a motion to approve the resolution establishing fees for the Bo Roberts Municipal Golf Course for the 2021 season. And I'm here as well as our head golf pro Conlon Burke for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Director. Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I, I do have one question. It's not necessarily about the rates, but I'm curious if the golf simulators are, if you're having the league this winter or what that is looking like, just given COVID and, and how things are going.
Yes, Mayor, Commissioner Dean, we do have a league going this year. I will turn it over to Conlon Burke. He can give you a little more information on what the leagues are looking like with COVID.
Mr. Burke, you have the floor.
Mayor Commissioners. Yes, we do have the simulators up and running. We do have league. We're in the middle of the eleven week season as we speak. Right now we have a total of fifty eight league teams playing every week as well as, you know, just intermittent open play, people coming in just practicing, playing on their own. We did reduce the hours down that we are available and added in some space in between users as to try to get in there and do some sanitizing, try and manage people flow for precautionary reasons. But yes, simulators are up and running seven days a week.
Planning to join the league?
Maybe.
Do we have any other comments from the commission? Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, you broke up on my screen. Mr. Mayor Commissioners, I've received no written public comment and I have no raised hands.
Okay. I'll, any further discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to approve a resolution establishing fees to be charged for the Bill Roberts Municipal Golf Course for the 2021 season.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, has been moved and seconded.
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Olafen.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Consider a resolution reducing the monthly wastewater service line replacement loan program charge and eliminating the monthly water and wastewater service line program charges on June thirtieth, twenty thirty. An amendment resolution number two zero four eight eight. Director Danielson?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight we have a resolution recommending the reduction of the wastewater service line program charge from six dollars and forty seven cents per month per account to two dollars and fifty cents per month per account and sunsetting both the water and wastewater service line loan charges in June of twenty thirty. The Public Works Director Leland and I did some analysis on the program and looked at the current usage, which is fairly low. Currently outstanding on the programs are only eight water service line loans and seven sewer service line loans. We also looked at the revenue collection over the last couple of years. This started in twenty eighteen. And the current fund balance for the water service line loan is about four hundred and forty thousand dollars and the wastewater service line loan fund balance is around one point three million dollars. Based on that assessment of looking at current usage and what the current fund balances are, Director Leland and I are recommending that we reduce the wastewater service line loan fee to the equivalent of the water service line low fee and then sunset both of the fees in June thirtieth. We also are recommending that in two years, we'll come back and look at the usage rate of the program and determine if that sunset date and or charges can be reevaluated. So staff at this point recommends that the commission move to approve the resolution to reduce the wastewater service line replacement loan charge from six dollars and forty seven cents to two dollars and fifty cents. And we also recommend that the program charges for both the water and the wastewater service line programs be sunsetted in June thirtieth. June, I'm sorry, June thirtieth of twenty thirty. Thank you. And I can answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Director. Comments or questions from the commission?
I guess, oh, I'm sorry. I was just gonna give a comment. I don't have any questions.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Well, I just want to say thank you to Director Danielson and Director Leland for their work on this. I know we've been talking about this for a year now, thinking through what, what it looks like. And really we've had folks in the community asking us to consider a potential sunset for, for a couple of years now. So I just want to say thank you for the work that has been put into this. I, I think that twenty thirty is a, is, is a conservative date factoring in a potential growth in the program, which, you know, I think we, we hope that the program can continue to be utilized. So I think, I, I think it makes a lot of sense to reevaluate in two years and see where we sit. If it's possible to sunset the fee, you know, earlier, but it, it gives us, you know, it gives kind of future commissions at least an expectation that this fee should sunset and the program itself should be self-sustaining by twenty thirty. So I just want to say thank you. I've had a chance So I just want to say thank you. Um, I've had a chance to talk to at least one person who's utilized the program, and my, you know, my understanding was that this was an emergency situation where their sewer line went out and was a really critical program that they could tap into. That being said, it, it came with some challenges. I think that it's a, it's a new program that we got up and running a few years ago. And so I hope that we can continue to, you know, improve the service for those who are utilizing it. And, um, you know, and, and I, I'm also, I know Commissioner Logan, you've indicated some interest in looking at some possible other options. I'm certainly open, you know, to that as well. So just thanks again to the staff for putting in the work to kind of figure out what, what might be possible with a sunset and, and the, and lowering the fee. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments from the commission? Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have Ed Karens.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Karens.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I hope you can hear me.
Yes, we can.
Thank you for this opportunity, and I'll be brief. You know, I have submitted my written comments for your proposed resolution and have certainly supported. I wanted to highlight those comments with a personal example, though. My in-laws were residents of the Helena area for many years. They raised a family here. As they neared retirement, they moved into an older, smaller house, you know, one of those ones that was built before 1939, and stayed there until they passed. When we cleaned out the house, we found a number of plungers and septic-lined snakes. The bathtub took an hour to drain. They had lived in this house for over 25 years on a fixed income. We do not know how long they lived with this sewer problem, how many toilet backups they endured. They never said anything. We had the sewer line inspected and found root obstructions in the line. The obstructions were caused by a box elder tree in their yard, and then near the street, the parkway trees. We replaced this entire clay line, um, foundation to the main tap with PVC pipe at a cost of $15,000. You know, the current fund may be able to help about 200 homeowners in this same situation, but I would wager there are about 1,000. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Karens. Any other public comments? Madam Clerk, any other public comments?
Mr. Mayor, I, I've received no further public comment or raised hands.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mayor.
Okay.
Okay.
Both of you was saying the same thing? Or is this something?
I think, no, I think we were both.
Okay, go ahead then.
I'll, I'll move to approve a resolution reducing the monthly wastewater service line replacement loan program charge and eliminating the monthly water and wastewater service line program charges on June 30th, 2030, and amending resolution number 20488.
Second.
Any finer discussion? It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Olafman.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. At this time, is there anyone from the public wishes to address the commission? And a clerk, do we have any raised hands?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no hands raised, and I've received no written public comment.
We'll give them another 45 seconds, and then we'll move forward. Any finer comments from the commission? Well, I thank you all for participating in this meeting. At this time, this meeting is formally adjourned.